Alright, here's... Knowing the time, it's a little bit after 7:30. We're getting started. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is Trevor Lobbenstein. I'll be chairing this meeting. All meetings are recorded by Westcap. Is there anyone else who'd like to record this meeting? So could you please identify yourself? Seeing none, as a reminder, please turn off your cellphones and anything else that makes noises in the room. The agenda's available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow your word on the agenda. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when I do this call, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff commentary. The board members will ask questions of the applicant. And in the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it is time for a public comment, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. And once to the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address to the record. All comments and questions are addressed to the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. First, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no... Oh, actually, there are some changes. Originally, I put on a placeholder for Autumn Estates' possible A&amp;R plan, thinking we might receive it. You did not receive it, so that's been in the agenda.
Okay, very good. Okay. So then we have our first item. This is item number one. It's 266 through 278, 277A, 277 through 283, 288, and 291 through 295 Washington Street, Nine School Street, East Street, Islington... Sorry, the East Street, Islington Village redevelopment. This is a public hearing that has been continued from 1:06:18. So this is a request, among other things, for a FMEOD special permit, earth material movement, and EIDR proposal for a new mixed-use building for a first-floor commercial with two floors of condominium residences and underground parking. So that will give us over to the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Peter Zachos, attorney representing the applicant, who's Patrussiello Properties LLC. Also here this evening is Giorgio Patrussiello, who is a member, owner of the LLC. Also here on out at half is Sue Harrington from GCG Engineering. They have a project, civil engineering, a project. Ken Cram is here. Ken is the Bayside Engineering. He is the traffic consultant, traffic engineer on this project. This evening, with your permission, the chairman, we figured we could do the quick one first. We did this fiscal impact overview, followed by Sue Harrington going over some of the new engineering designs and site designs, and then have Ken Cram go over the traffic.
Sounds good.
Okay. So first for tonight, we're going to do what I call the fiscal impact overview as part of our application package. Fujiar Planning submitted a fiscal impact analysis regarding this project. The town insurance sent it to AKG, who's the towns consultant, who reviewed our consultants' work and came up with their own conclusions. I'll stop by saying, there isn't... We got to the bottom line... Is it tight? The bottom line... Thank you. The bottom line is that we're very close in terms of our ultimate conclusions. We seem to have reached it by a little bit of a different route, but I'm going to quickly go through that. Today, I'm just... I'm going to present the comparison and need to get into the further details we can. First thing up there is the classic definition. Just so everybody's aware of what a fiscal impact analysis is. I'm going to read it. You can read it. It's on the board. To simplify it, though, it's basically looking at the estimated revenues that would be projected to be generated by the project to the town upon completion. It's direct revenue, basically real estate taxes and a few other things. And from that, you subtract the estimated costs from the town as a result of this project, what departments would be impacted and what are the costs for those. It then allows you at the end to compare to what is the current situation. So in the simplistic sense, it's basically revenues minus costs. So on the next sheet, where there's no agreement... No disagreements, excuse me. And you probably can't read it, but the bottom line is currently, if you take a look at all the properties that are involved in this project, the revenues generated, the gross tax revenues to the town are approximately $68,730. Now, clearly, you see some blanks at the very last column there because the town properties don't generate revenue to the town. So it's really the current properties owned or controlled by Patrussiello Properties that would be generating that $68,730. And that $68,730 for comparison purposes has been used throughout the report without any deductions. However, you could argue that the existing properties do have some costs to the town, be it the fire department, et cetera, but we'd leave that as a whole number and just walk through that. The next slide is the projected revenue slide on the completed project. And you can tell it's a different color, but the green is what I call the Fujiar applicant and what is sort of a purplish is AKG Town. And basically, we took the four buildings. The mixed-use building, we had at a little over $209,000. AKG actually had that a little higher, $250,000. And some of the changes in these happen to do with, as the project had refined, there could have been some change from the initial submission in terms of the actual square footage of the building. Typically, they find what they believe is the reasonable assessment per square foot of a building and multiply it by the square feet. So that could account for some of that difference on the first one. On the renovated 266, 278 Washington Street, which is the building that currently has the CVS in it and the dry cleaner, as you know, proposed to be renovated with a... Was it 4,000 square feet, I believe, in the basement that's currently used as storage of built-out? Again, we were pretty close with the towns consultant. We were a little over 102, they were a little over 104. The biggest drop is on the new CVS. We had it at approximately $205,000, and the towns consultant had it at $153,000. A lot of that, again, some of it could be changed. They thought our per-square-foot price was high. We think there's some factors, but again, we're not here to argue because at the end of the day, it comes out the same. We also added in, probably the only other non-pure real estate tax, is auto excise tax. This is based on 28 vehicles that would potentially be registered in the town, and we actually agreed on that number, $10,500 for that. The next number is Fujiar. He does this in all his reports. I've seen his work in other towns. I've used him, as well as some other consultants. The town supposedly gets reimbursed for ambulance service through insurance or what have you. So we took a $1,576. Addition to that, the towns consultant basically indicated that as zero because it's somewhat speculative and you may actually not see any money. But if you go to the very bottom, we came out with a total revenue of almost just shy of $529, and the town consultant was just shy of $518. So again, in the long run, this is one of the closest I've ever seen in terms of analysis and a peer reviewer being within, well, let's say, probably less than 5% difference. The next slide is generating the direct... Or an estimate of the direct municipal cost. And here, the direct cost or the direct impact to the town would be on police, fire, and education. Interesting, police, both the town and my consultant, basically agreed that the incremental or the direct cost to the town would be $13,780. Fire, they were higher than us at $12,240 compared to our $8,500. Education, the town consultant was higher. I think my consultant may have used a state average in terms of the per-person cost or per pupil cost. Your consultant used the exact cost that is per-student cost for a student in the town of Westwood. The interesting part, though, I think the important part of that is that both consultants agreed that the 18 condominium units that are proposed were properly generated or estimated to generate three schoolchildren. It's actually 2 point something, and they were both rounded up to the three. So at the end of the day, the town had about $10,000 more cost to the project than our consultant did, $43 and change to $53 and change. And then really, the last slide is get you to the bottom line, and there's different ways of running these numbers. Again, the total revenues that we talked about, less the total costs. And then I put a line in there, existing real estate taxes, which is that first number I started with, the $68,730. So the net fiscal impact by both my consultant and the town consultant, I believe is extremely, I call it extremely positive to the town. We predicted or estimated $416,750. The towns consultant had it at $395,796. Again, we'll accept that number. It's not worth the 5% differential or whatever it may be. It's not... There isn't really much to argue about. So again, it's revenues minus costs, very fiscally positive. And again, another way that we do it is the comparison. So we would, as opposed to just subtracting it out, so using the town consultant's numbers, we had a... You would compare 464,000 and change coming to the town compared to $68,730 coming to the town today. And again, I emphasize that there were no costs involved in $68,000, so we believe that the number is fairly good and fairly conservative. And the other thing, which we always include in our fiscal analysis, most peer reviewers exclude it, is that there are a lot of one-time fees that are paid, specifically a building permit fee. In this particular case, we've estimated the building permit fee to the town in the average of $180,000. And I know that the building department and others who will be reviewing this will work hard in their review, but we don't believe it will cost the $180,000. In essence, the town makes a little bit of a profit on the application fee. So that's the comparison. As I say, we're accepting the number for purposes of this proceeding that was done by the towns consultant. And we'll respond to any specific questions you have on the economic, fiscal impact. Thank you.
So did you guys have additional items to sort of present or discuss tonight? Or is that...
Fiscal impact.
Fiscal impact. Actually, one second. Yes, I just... Sorry. Yeah, I'm trying to see if we could hear from our consultant from AKG. Is he... Is... I'll hold it again.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you and welcome. Nice to be back here in Westwood. I'm Craig Seymour, president of AKG Associates, hired by the town to review the fiscal impact for this project, as we've done with some of the other projects in town. We've been before you recently. I want to thank Attorney Zachos for basically giving my presentation, which I was going to go through all of this in detail, and he pretty much summed it up. I would just like to... I'll just summarize and say that the differences between Mr. Fujiar's approaches and the number he ended up with in ours are, for the most part, relatively minor. Again, a warning is when you come to fiscal impact, even though we calculate out to a single-digit number, these are just rough estimates of what these impacts may be in the future. So they're really... You know, the purpose is to try to get a handle on from a more of a macro level as to what the overall pluses and minuses of a particular development is. In this case, we made some changes because there were some last-minute changes to the project plan in terms of what's being included in the size of some of those buildings, which you recognize. Our total tax revenues were a little bit different. We looked at their consultants' estimates for what, on a per-square-foot basis, what these buildings would be valued at, and there was... We did not provide the backup as to how we got those numbers, and they seemed a little out of whack to us. So we used more generic industry standard data that we know is supportable to the market in Westwood. And we actually went to the assessor and got... And worked with the assessor to get a database of all the retail commercial properties and looked at it on an average basis and separated out between what's University Station, which is obviously kind of an outlier, with the new construction there, and the rest of the town. And it's somewhere in between, and I feel I'm very comfortable in terms of the dollars per square foot that we came up with. So some of the buildings we were lower, some of the buildings we were a little bit higher, but overall, I think we're in pretty good shape with that. And again, the bottom line in terms of the net tax revenue coming in turned out to be about the same. The other difference was in our approach to estimating the costs. Mr. Fujiar ended up using a per-call estimate, taking the number of calls that the fire department and the police department make, and then putting a factor against that based upon some other information that he had from some other data that he has. Again, we didn't have access to that. The way we do it is we look at it on a per-household or a per-square-foot basis. We ran our analysis on that and came up with slightly higher numbers. Education, we both estimated, as Attorney Zachos said, we both agree, about three students will be coming out of this. I think our number is per student... The number of students per unit was, I think we did use 1.2. He used the previous estimate from four, five years ago of 1.44. It'll be about that. The data that we're looking at now from around the greater Boston area, from suburban developments that are going in for both apartments or condos are running in that area, so roughly about three students coming in. We calculated our cost based upon the general fund, the average general fund cost per student of $9,200 per student, multiplied back to three, we got to $27,000 we came up with. Other than that, I, you know, as he pointed out, we are pretty much agreement. We're very, very close. I'm comfortable either way that this is going to be a positive development in terms of the fiscal cost to the community. And with that, I will close and answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks very much. I'll probably continue for a minute more. Maybe we'll just do a quick pause as we're sort of completed with the presentations on the fiscal impact. Are there any questions from the board on the fiscal analysis?
Yeah, I have a couple. So the... I was reading through the report. It looks like, so the comparison was, was it Frendingham and Nada, or did you use others to generate that rate?
We just... We didn't make any direct comparisons because there aren't any projects just like this that have that data available. We looked at, as we did for University Station, at a range of different types of housing, relatively newer housing, both apartments and condominiums, and kind of a blend of those on this larger scale, more macro level data that we have from those two communities. We've been working on the master plans there, so we had access to those data. And again, just looking at it, stepping back and saying, in context, the relative number of students per unit from one-bedroom and two-bedroom units is falling within fairly narrow ranges. Now, there is variety within that if you look at individual properties. And there's a host of research out there now that we're... We do a little bit of it, and some of the other folks in the state do a little bit of it. You can... The amount of kids coming up can vary, almost double from one project to another project, where you really don't have that much of a difference, other than the school system may be rated a little bit higher.
So what is the rate over at University that we're seeing for the same number of bedrooms?
We're seeing about, I think they're overall 1.11, and it's for the two bedrooms about 0.22 or 0.24, if I recall, I'm figuring the numbers out, for the two bedrooms. No, no, actually, it's not that. I'm sorry. I'll back off on that. It's not that high. I think it's about 0.12. It could be 1.15 with the new data that just came out. But again, those are apartments. This is going to be a little bit different than the condominiums. And again, it's hard to tell precisely, but again, I'm comfortable that it's going to be three. It might be four. And then the other hand, it could be one or two, depending on the type of people that actually have the, you know, the age, the range, incomes of those people that ultimately will...
And then my other... Just my last question is, did you include the rent from MMO in the fiscal impact as a net positive?
No, we did not because we treated MMO as a separate operation of the town as it is, basically a nonprofit. So we did not see that rent coming in. We did include devaluation of the MMO space at $150 a square foot, since it's basement space. It's going to be lower than the, you know...
Yeah, because I think they currently pay $88,000, so...
Right, but we're also assuming it's going to be taxable. If they're going to pay rent to the private landlord, then the landlord will pay tax. So we did include that devaluation of that...
But that would be much less than $88,000. That would be a proportion of that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commentary from our board or questions in the board? Okay. We will, when this all of the further comment prior to George, I don't want to be nervous that we're moving on, but so ask the applicant, what else, what would be next in your presentation tonight?
Probably makes sense at this point to have Sue Harrington go over the new plans that have been filed and show you the changes and discuss why we've made changes to the project.
Sounds good.
I'm with GCG Associates, Civil Engineering France, representing Giorgio Patrussiello and Patrussiello Properties in the development of Islington Center. The first thing I'd like to do, just for people that were or wanted to go to the last meeting, is a super brief overview of what is actually being proposed here and who currently owns what. This is a little bit blown up, but everything on the screen that's shown in blue is currently owned by Patrussiello Properties. Everything that's shown in that orange ground is currently owned by the town. What you see over here is the municipal parking lot. This is the current Islington Community Center, the library. This is currently a CVS and dry cleaner. This is a deli and barber shop, an existing dwelling, and this is a temporary location for the Blue Heart Tavern. And this is some open space back here with the resource area. So what you see here is a full overview of the intersection. There is Washington Street with School Street, top of the page. This is East Street down here. Over the south side of the intersection, this was recently redeveloped by Patrussiello Properties. On the north side of the intersection, we divided it into two sites. When we talk about it, you'll see on future screens that they're each shown on their own site. This is the School Street side. This is the East Street side. What we're proposing to do here is take the community center, that will be demolished, take the library, move it across the street, not demolished, move it across the street in the same footprint, some community space added on to the back of it. This is the current CVS location over here, existing dry cleaner. This whole building is to remain, it's being renovated. It's new use. I forgot to mention that in the community center, there's an existing MMO daycare. That will be moved into the new renovated building on the lower level, 4,000 square feet. This will be used as 8,700 square feet of, sorry, 8,700 square feet of retail. And the CVS will be moved across the street in a new, an entirely new building. This community center will be a new mixed-use facility, designed in the same style as the community center that's currently there with the same peak on top. It's to have 13,000 square feet of retail use, 18 condos, and 36 parking spaces on a lower level to accommodate those condos that are being placed there. The major objective, I think, of this meeting is, one of the things that you saw that was previously on the slides, previously on these sites, is the Blue Heart Tavern, and it was shown on the previous plans. One of the objectives of the town was to try to preserve this building, give it a permanent home, give it a use. And on these plans, you don't see it here. We did run through four options of trying to preserve this building, and I'll come back around to what you see here, which is, it's not shown on these plans. So we looked at four separate options. The first option was to locate the Blue Heart Tavern at the rear of the lot. The benefit of this is that it's given a permanent location. It's on the lot. And the negatives of this location is it's just kind of stuck in the back. It's not visible, so it doesn't really meet the intention. This building, the reason that they want to preserve it, that the town would like to see this building preserved, is that it has a historic use. I don't... I think that it doesn't have historic qualities with respect to the architecture or the interior. There's not something specific about the building itself is trying to be reserved, but the use itself that gives it its historic properties. But so it's just kind of stuck at the back of the site. The town really wanted to see it moved up to the street, so we looked at two other options, placing it on the School Street side. I didn't come up with... We didn't come up with a plan that really worked for putting it over here. We did try rotating the CVS building so the lawn faces on Washington Street, and with this existing resource area over here, it just doesn't fit. You don't have room for a loading zone behind the CVS and a roadway and the Blue Heart Tavern to be on the face of that street, which, if you were to put it on either one of those streets, it would make sense that School Street would be the prime choice where... This is an existing dwelling right here, and for those of you who are familiar with what the Blue Heart Tavern looks like, it looks a little bit more like a house. It's wooden structure, it's yellow, and it would fit. It would be a nicer transition between the CVS and the residential zone that's back here. The second option that we looked... But it doesn't fit. The second option that we looked at was placing it up on Washington Street. Also, one of the pros with putting it up here is it's reserved, it's on the site. But through discussion with, you know, the CVS, our client, it's our opinion that it's not desirable to have it in this location between the library and the CVS. It doesn't do anything for the transition. It pushes the CVS parking away from, away from the CVS. There was an original CVS-approved plan. The CVS as a tenant on this property was a huge piece to this puzzle with this property, with this overall project. And the other con to this layout is that it moves the opening about 50 feet closer to this cute intersection, where there's a timed traffic signal up here. Where there's a timed traffic signal up here, and from what we understand, this is already a problem with queuing in the AM and PM peak hours. So moving this fifty feet closer to the intersection probably isn't, isn't ideal. And the other, the other con to this layout is we have deliveries coming back around the CVS, and we have a designated loading zone that is an exit only out onto School Street. We do have the loading zone up against the building, and for trucks coming down, turning into the property, they would have to turn and they end up in this lane over here, so they have to back up and essentially parallel park into this loading zone back here. So that is one of the, one of the main reasons that this isn't on CVS original approved plan. Let me go back to the other screen. So this is where the current layout is at, and this is, this provides access right next to the library to come up. And you can take that turn, you can come right into the loading zone here, and this is, this is what's closest to what's on the CVS originally approved plan. And they very much like to keep it so that they have this access. So that doesn't seem like a feasible option to keep the Blue Heart Tavern up on Washington Street. Which brings us to, to this layout that you see on the screen right here. We concluded there, there wasn't an optimal site location to place this Blue Heart Tavern and preserve it. Three major benefits of having this location opened up in the back is that you gain a little bit of parking back there, it's probably maybe six, seven A spaces. One of the resident concerns was, there's a resident behind here with a pool, and one of their concerns was that there really wasn't any screening back here, this is a residential zone, this is hopeful to be a business zone up here. It's currently split. But this provides for the twenty-foot required buffer per the zoning bylaws. That this can be screened with a fence, eight-foot everybody's, gives some more room for grading. Anybody that's familiar with the site knows that this goes, it's a pretty steep slope back here, and we'd like to flatten this out, place a wall here, put a lot of screening back there, and, and also, this residential zone goes all the way around. This space back here would remain an open space with a resource area turned over to the town.
I don't mean to interrupt Sue, but I just want to go back to the Blue Heart Tavern, Sue mentioned this, when the Blue Heart Tavern was originally moved from its current location, prior to the move, my client Giorgio met with, at least a member or members of the Historic Society and walked through that. And as Sue mentioned, our understanding is the historic significant, significance of these, of this building, it's, is its prior use as a tavern. When my client purchased the property from Aga Letter, it had been totally renovated inside and outside. To my knowledge, there is no architectural significance to anything on the outside of that building. In the inside of that building, my understanding is that there are two mantles which would have architectural significance, except for the fact that they are, what's the term you use? Smashed, except for that they're, they're disarrayed. So other than that, we're not aware of anything inside or outside of the building that's, I used the word architectural significance. So I just want to, you just reemphasize that point. And as we're all over here, because we've mentioned it, the, my client has done what he was requested to do by the town, which was on project one, across the street, he did lift it off its foundation, relocated it to the property at Nine School Street. He's been storing it at that location, he's made other attempts to get it off the site. He had one person who was, he wasn't selling it, so if anybody here wants the building, he'll gladly give it to you. He had one interested party who had thought he had found a location and he was going to take the property, unfortunately, that fell through. My client itself has looked for some land around the general area to see if there was a place where he could relocate it, that didn't happen. My understanding is most recently, the gentleman who was interested in it the first time, is hoping that he's still looking, but again, we'll so, you know, it's not that we're simply saying we want to, you know, get rid of it, it doesn't, we don't think it works on the site, we heard people say, if you're going to do it, we want it till we can see it and not put it in the back. So we're open to suggestions, if anybody in the town has a, a location for this, we would gladly hand over the Blue Heart Tavern to whoever would want it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that, that pretty much closes out the layout discussion of, of the Blue Heart Tavern. This is the current configuration that we came up with, a few other things that were, were improved based on comments that came from the planning board, from the residents. There is a community space that's added to the back of the library, that would be an addition. Two thousand square foot footprint with four thousand square foot total, two levels. There's, one of the big comments was that this is a lot of parking lot, not a lot of walkways, not a lot of accessibility. So we tried to make it more continuous, we have walkways, well, this is how it was shown last time with respect to the CVS. But we do have a crosswalk coming across the street to this walkway, we extended this walkway around to this back parking area, which is, has been reconfigured. These walkways come straight across, up adjacent to the library and the community space, around the back of the library, the community space, so. We did make an effort to, to add more contiguous walkways. Some of this is just pretty standard parking layout, we like to add a lot of green space in there, so it doesn't really make sense to put crosswalks across the middle of the parkway. But, where you have the library here, the community space here, all of these spaces are allotted to municipal. It would make sense that if somebody's parking at the library, the community space, you could use any of these walkways, go down across School Street to the park over there. So that kind of sums, sums it up for that side. We did also actually, on, on the School Street side and the East Street side, we added four electric parking spaces, two on the back of the community building and two in the multi-use building in the underground garage. So that would bring us to the East Street side. So this is the East Street side, one of the biggest, this is, this is the multi-use building here, thirteen thousand square feet. This is the existing renovated building, that'll be retail and MMO daycare. One of the big, the biggest comments on this side is that there really wasn't a lot of walkways, not a lot of accessibility. There's about a six-foot difference from, from this sidewalk up here to this rear parking area, so ADA is of concern. What we have now is this walkway around here is ADA accessible, it continues. You can either follow it through here to get to any of the rear opening of these buildings, or you can follow it all the way down, all the way down and cross this parking lot, cross the entrance into the garage, back up around near the MMO playground, up this side. This side is a little bit of a bigger issue, we, what we did was regrade this whole parking lot over here, so that if you can have accessibility on this side, and we added, it's still at the limit for ADA, so we do have handrails, both on the side of the building and between the, the walkway and the drive entrance. And there is a level landing, it does comply. This set of plans that was submitted does show that. One of the things that was looked at is if we could provide accessibility in between the buildings, and we looked at two options that didn't really make sense. One, one was to have a public elevator in the building. Which doesn't make sense, because there's already building use elevators proposed in each of these buildings. And we also looked at putting ramps, you have about the same grade drop over here as you do over here. So we really would have had to put about sixty or seventy feet of concrete ramps compromising this entire patio area, so that wasn't a feasible option, but we did achieve ADA accessibility on both sides of the buildings, there are entrances on both the fronts and backs of buildings, and like I said, elevators in both of them. Another big thing that was looked at, that was commented on on this site was the MMO playground area. There's an existing playground on East Street, it's located behind the community center over here. What we had shown on the original plan was a twenty by twenty playground area. And that was not comparable to the playground that currently exists there. So we brought it up to fourteen hundred square feet, the one that's existing right now is about eighteen hundred square feet, and to just kind of put that in perspective, what the size difference is, that would be like if you pulled the fence on East Street in about five feet, so it's really, the size difference is, is kind of negligible. You have a nice square space to put all the playground equipment. And the other comment with respect to the playground, we did look at different locations for the playground. We looked at putting it up against the building, but that eliminates the width here with a lot of the parking, we looked at putting it right over here, and I think just visually you can tell you weren't getting a very big play space. And this seems very central to the parking, where you have kids playing in there, so what we did was make this a dead end right here so that you don't have cars flying around and coming right into the playground area. And one thing that we don't currently show on this plan right here is ballards, but we'll have ballards up on either side of the play area. And to achieve that size of the playground area, one of the major changes that was made is that lobby on the renovated building was changed from a proposed twenty by twenty to a twenty by seven lobby, so we did accommodate with, with thirteen feet on that lobby to achieve that playground size. Another comment on this property that was on the East Street side that was revised is there wasn't really any screening on the rear of the property. Existing, there's about two, two feet Stafford Street side, coming out to about twelve feet over here, what we did was increase that to a consistent nine or ten feet screening back here. And this will either be, either the remaining or replaced fence if necessary. And with that, you're able to, to plant all screening for nine or ten feet and save those trees that are there currently. I'll show you pictures of the trees that are there. So you see, there's a couple of really big trees along this fence, and we understand through conversation with the town that it's in the interest of these residents to preserve these trees. We are working with a landscape architect to get the appropriate screening along this fence by them, so it, it could be up for discussion whether that's acceptable to the town and to the residents, which trees, you know, are saved and which ones are replaced. And just eight-foot everybody's added in a row for screening. But that could be, one of the major changes on this size is that we were, were able to come closer to the zoning requirement for the buffer. There was one more question on the East Street property that I'd like to address, in case those residents are here. I believe that one was four seventy-one East Street and the other one was three Stafford Place. Both of these properties have access to their residences only through this parking lot. So the first one is down here, and the other is the property just off to the right there. And we, we talked this through with the town, and what we would like to do is provide easement across this property, not change their, not change their entrances at all. We didn't think it would make sense to, to take other, to make another exit right here next to this exit. And I don't know if Ken wants to talk about that from a traffic standpoint, but what we'd like to do is give them easements onto those properties. There's a few other things that were changed, that were, a little bit more community space on the left side of the mixed-use building, some patio space between the two buildings, that space was increased by reducing the lobby size, so I believe it meets code. And then I want to talk about parking a little bit. Do you want to just show the, should we just show the architectural stuff?
When it comes to the architecturals, this was the new redesign, the new rendering of the CVS, similar to the plan shown. These are elevations of the proposed CVS, I think these were shown last week, last, sorry, last meeting. This was a rendering of the, uh, mixed-use building. This is showing the parking layout in the basement, a few things have changed, we did the recycling centers and the trash, we did a trash room in the basement. And we did two electric car stations also in this basement. That's just the first floor retail space in the mixed-use building. This is the second floor of the condo layout, third floor of the condo layout. This is the, so, top one is the front elevation from Washington Street, and the bottom one is the rear elevation. Basically standing on the backside of the existing CVS. This is facing, so the top ones if you're facing, if you're standing at the new fire station looking towards the community center. And the bottom one is if you're standing at the side of Sally and Rocco's. That's the elevation. So this one here shows the comparison of the, the community center and the, excuse me, the new mixed-use building with the renovated MMO and retail building. Well, and heights and how it's going to look side by side. This is the lower level MMO space with the lobby, elevator accessing the MMO from the lobby to the parking lot and then going all the way up to the next floor up from the backside of the building. This is the first floor of retail on the existing CVS that will be remodeled. That's elevation of the, of the existing CVS that's going to be remodeled. These are the two sides, the left side Sally and Rocco and the right side facing the community center. And that's the rear elevation. We added more glass down in the MMO section, which was requested last time, and we changed the gable end to dorm style on the backside. I think that's it for the architectural.
If you go back to eleven and twelve of those, it looked like there were some shed dormers on the, where the condos would be, I believe there's eleven. Yes, we go back, yeah, so, so what side is? So that's East Street?
The top ones is you're standing at the fire station, looking towards the community center. So it's, it's, the elevation doesn't really do it justice, it's not a flat building, and so this is the elevation, so the the front tower section is the one that sticks out the furthest, the back sections are like sixty, seventy feet back.
And those dormers are not on the Washington side, Washington Street side?
Correct.
Okay, and then the other thing we were interested in hearing more about was work to the intersection? Is that something that's part of tonight's discussion or?
Good evening, Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering, traffic consultant. And Abby, if you could just switch over, I don't have a technological challenge here. No, it doesn't, it won't be the grid design. We need to go that way. Thank you. Bayside was brought into the project and we've done, we're about to complete a full traffic impact and access study for the development. And basically this graphic simply shows the intersections that we looked at as part of this project. Obviously the key intersection being School Street, Washington Street, and East Street. But we looked at basically the entire corridor from Fairview Street down to the Roach Brothers driveway in the north-south direction and from Schaefer Ave going easterly towards Stafford Road. And it included all the driveways that currently serve the site as well as the traffic study will include all the driveways that are real, real mind a little bit in some instances or in cases of the, you would call the east side, Washington Street east side driveway, which is the CBS driveway, it's basically in that same location. We've gone out and we've done new counts. And this graphic here, I'm sorry, you can't read the numbers, they're kind of small. We were also the same consultants that did Giorgio's project across the street, 301 to 323 back in 2015. So we had a good opportunity here to look at volumes back then in 2015 and what we counted here in, you know, December 2017 and January 2018. And we found that the volumes for the most part are comparable. In some cases they're a little bit lower, in some cases a little bit higher, but generally the 2015 volumes and 2018 volumes are comparable. So as part of our first memorandum, we tried to look at the intersection and what could be done because we didn't have all the counts completed for the new traffic study. We based it on the old counts projected upward and did some analysis with that. But like I said, we did the whole, we're in the process of completing the traffic study. I have to go through and do the QA QC and back check a number of items, but we followed standard protocol for doing traffic impact and access studies. We have existing volumes. We looked at safety factors, crashes that occurred in the last five years which we had recordable data. We looked at site distances. We've done a gap analysis, everything that is required by the town's requirements as well as MasCOT state guidelines. But what we did do mostly, we spent a lot of time, a lot of time focusing on the intersection of School Street, Washington Street, and East Street. And we wanted to, we were asked, you know, what can we do for solutions? And a number of ideas were thrown out. And so basically we went through about six options that we've developed to date so far. And they include, I'm just trying to find my little list here. We looked at six options and they basically go sequentially in order. The first option was simply to re-stripe Washington Street to get a southbound left turn lane. Second one was what we call option two, which would be-
Could you mind just speaking a little bit slower when you go into the different options?
Okay.
Especially when you're talking orientation so that we can all understand what these options are.
Okay, option one, simply re-stripe Washington Street southbound. That we have a slide for that one. Re-stripe Washington Street southbound for an exclusive left turn lane. And we would modify the signal timing and phasing accordingly based on the changed geometry. Option two, widen and re-stripe Washington Street southbound to consist of an exclusive left turn lane and two through lanes. We do have a slide for that one, Abby, if we go to figure 13, we call it. This is a conceptual graphic representing what that option two would look like. As you can see, what happens when we have to widen, we have to push the road over to the right. We can't go to the left because of the existing location of the buildings and the parking on the northeast to the right. So that would be the east side of Washington Street. So we have to push further into our site. And unfortunately, what this option does is it creates an alignment issue going through the intersection. So we have to realign even on the front of the other side, which then would eliminate three parking spaces south of the intersection as well as all what we had proposed for parking on streets on the north side of the intersection. There were also a number of telephone poles that would have to be relocated with this option as well as a complete upgrading of the traffic signal. Option three, we got a little creative. We do have a slide for this one, Abby. We maintain the existing striping on Washington Street southbound. But because we have the ability now, with the building being pulled back a little bit, we can further widen the East Street approach. Now, when we did our traffic numbers and we looked at all the capacity analyses, there's well over 400 cars that are currently making left turns from East Street onto Washington Street southbound. As a traffic engineer, when you get to that level of volume, you start thinking, I need a double left turn lane to help with the capacity. And this option actually gives us the best bang for our buck, so to speak, in terms of improving overall intersection operations. We also looked at option four, which is the next slide, which also simply is the same thing. We widen East Street, but we also do the re-striping of Washington Street southbound. And unfortunately, what this does is while the left turn lane is helpful for vehicles that were on turn left, what it does do is it pushes all the through traffic into a single lane heading southbound on Washington Street. And that then they get penalized because the timing is not adequate enough because of what has to be given for both the other approaches as well as Washington Street northbound. The last two options, which I do not have pictures of, we would looked at the volume of traffic that's coming northbound on Washington Street. There is a significant volume of traffic that's coming up Washington Street, turning right onto East Street heading towards 95 and Route 128. Unfortunately, putting a right turn lane on Washington Street northbound would require doing work in front of the fire station, which has just recently been reconstructed, as well as it would have to extend it as far back as Roach Brothers. And Roach Brothers is not a party to any of these discussions. So we couldn't get the land unless an evidence of maintenance that took place. And of course, option six was simply the same as option five, but we also do widening of East Street. There is a big table and unfortunately I just saw it. I thought we would be able to read the numbers, but those numbers summarize the resulting levels of service, which will all be in the traffic impact and access study. And just by comparison, currently right now, under future 2025 build conditions, we had to do a seven-year planning horizon. There's global service F projected for the intersection with calculated delays of 171 seconds approximately, excuse me, and 131 seconds in the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hour respectively. And basically, the option that gives us the best improvement overall is actually option five, which is adding the right turn lane. But unfortunately, we cannot add that. So we looked at option two and three. And option two, which was the widening to get the two lanes southbound on Washington Street, you end up with actually a worse level of service because in the morning, worst level of service in the morning, because the critical movement in the morning peak hour is not the southbound through, it's the northbound through, the northbound right, and the eastbound left turn, no, westbound left turns and the School Street approach. In the evening, it does get better. And then on Saturday, it also basically stays the same in terms of overall level of service. So overall, the best improvement right now we see is option three, where we do the widening on East Street and get the, excuse me, the level of service better than the protected build condition. So these are, as I indicated, the analyses we performed. We developed these preliminary concept plans. And these are all in the draft traffic study, which we will have finalized shortly. We put number three back up. That's two. Very slowly walk through what has changed and then we can, what the level of service would be, however you predict it on, it's different between the School Street and the one that had the entire intersection changed and that is adding the extra lane to East Street and the rest of it may have been on Washington. Well, I'll talk in terms of the overall level of service because it still is an F. But what happens is the eastbound left through right, which is the School Street approach, is improved. Now, I've got to get back up one second. I really have to say this. Westwood requires us to use a 4% compounded growth rate annually. So we've taken the 2017 and 18 volumes and we've increased them by over 30% to account for Westwood requirement of doing the analysis of the 4% growth. Historically, we have found that growth, you know, in the 2000 to 2010, there was really no growth or it was negative growth. We are starting to see a rebound in growth now. But Westwood is the only community I know with a requirement that we use a 4% compounded growth rate. So the volume, so these analyses get further, furtherly conservative, for lack of a better word, extremely conservative in terms of a level of service finding. So, and we go back to figure five, which showed that the volumes are comparable between 2015 and 2018. But just looking at the eastbound through, which would be School Street, it's a calculated F, and this is a calculated delay based on simply the model that we required to use of almost 380 seconds. But actually with the model with revised, it goes down to 143 seconds. So that, that's School Street. From School Street onto Washington? Crossing Washington, onto either Washington Street or crossing because it's a single lane approach, consists of one lane from which left through and right turn movements are made. And that, this is the morning peak hour results.
Can you, can you describe again the difference? The difference between option three and four, so it's, and actually, so the first option was just a left turn addition from Washington onto East, right? Like just striping it?
Right, well, option two was the first option. Option one was simply re-striping Washington Street.
And then option three adds the two left turn lanes on East Street?
Correct.
What does option four add?
Option four is, option three and four are variables of each other. This is, Abby, can you just sit down just a little bit? It's like the whole figure titled. This is option three where we don't do any changes to Washington Street southbound. Option four, through the next slide, we do the test where we change the Washington Street southbound approach to an exclusive left turn lane and a shared through right lane. So that's the difference between three and four.
So in option three, is it, is there a left turn signal? Like is there expected it's going northbound?
We ran it with a lead lag phasing so that there would be an advance for the westbound, for the southbound left turn, yes. Which is not there today.
Right, so it keeps the same geometry as today, but it will behave the way that the northbound is.
Correct.
That's what, that's what it's option three. So it's not, no change. It's a left turn light which would give some time to make that first.
Yes.
Thanks.
Can I just have a question? On option three, that seems like that would be helpful for evening commuters coming off of 95 down East Street, taking a left onto Washington. Is that the understanding?
Yes, it is.
So for, for the morning commuters coming down Pine Lane, down School Street, there seems to be no mitigation there. Is that correct or am I?
Right, we have not done anything to School Street because there's no room to do anything on School Street.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so option three is helpful for the evening commute essentially?
Right, and option three is helpful for the morning commute as well. I mean, well, let me rephrase that. Option three is better for the overall intersection level of service as well.
Okay, thanks.
And we looked at, one other comment come in from Beta Group as part of history Q. I don't have all of the results here. I just have the overall intersection delays. But the question was asked, what happens if we do a split phase? In other words, School Street goes on its own phase, no one else goes. So School Street has a free right of way, so it's weak. And then it's on the, just after that or before that, East Street would go and they would have no conflicting volumes as well. And what that does unfortunately, it's a good idea conceptually because there's less conflicting volume, but there's less time because now what you've done, that is currently happening in one phase, has to happen in two signal phases and it just takes time away from everybody else. And everybody else might meet everybody else, all the other movements in the intersection.
I just want a question. When were the dates that, that this was performed? When were they collecting data? Is it December or January? So what was?
Yeah.
And you can just send it to me after, I just, I wanted to-
December 14th, January 20th, December 14th, January 20th, 14th. I know there was some counts that were done on the 25th, I believe, as well, in January.
So those individual dates are just December 14th or is it a duration?
Well, it was just the, some of the, most of the traffic counts were done during the week on the December 14th date before Christmas. Then we had that, we had that snowstorm that week also, so we couldn't do the Saturday counts. And unfortunately due to scheduling, they got done after Christmas, after New Year's.
So December 14th, January 20th, and then what's the other day?
I think there was like a December, January 25th date. And we, as part of the traffic study, we looked at seasonal adjustment factors and we found January and December volumes to be lower than average. So we actually raised them up.
Good thing.
So I guess, I guess my next question would be, what would be your recommendation of the options? Or is it a hybrid of multiple?
Well, if I, if we had all the land in the world to speak of, I'd say a right turn lane on Washington Street northbound. But since we don't have that ability, option three, which maintains the Washington Street as it currently is with two lanes, but with the- but with the lagging phase to clear out left turns.
And would that include, sorry, the lagging phase to clear left turns is for southbound travelers on Washington?
Correct.
Right? Because I, okay.
I mean, we could, we could run it the other way. Whether it's a lead or a lag, it's going to be the same result.
Sure.
But in the other case, you know, then the Washington Street northbound would have the reverse, of course.
Right, right. Well, I, I think it makes sense in my head. And I think, I, I think I speak on behalf of the board and probably quite a few people who experience this intersection. We definitely appreciate you guys taking on this study. And it is complicated. And I, again, I feel like I understand it. And, but I think the, the addition, certainly the addition of the ability to take a left when you're a southbound traveler on Washington onto East Street, with a light, with an actual light rather than just, you know, your guts.
All right. It's interesting to note, though, the, the southbound left turn movement, whether A M or P M, is like the second lowest volume in the intersection. The lowest volume in the intersection is the East Street right turn onto Washington Street northbound.
That is actually interesting. I think it's like, it's, it's, but your statement doesn't account for psychological advantage.
We tried to do that for 35 years. I still haven't come up with an answer on that one.
Okay.
And then during your, your final analysis, when you go through this, when I look at this project, the biggest concern that I see as far as traffic is that left coming out of CBS onto School Street, where you have a one-way on both sides. And then you have the parking spaces where they have to back out of Wild Blossom. So will you account for that in your, your traffic study? Are you looking at that?
We will, we will, the backing out, we will look at. But we have accounted for the left turn lane, and we will look at tweaking, I mean, there's always tweaking, the signal timing to man-manage the queues so that the queues from the signal don't impact the intersections further upstream.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we're always trying to do.
Thanks.
I can just add a couple of things. One is, I'm sure we recognize this, this, which is option four, but the striping that's shown is the same as option three, actually pushes the side, current sidewalk over about nine feet too. And, as you know, even the rounding of the intersection from East Street onto Washington to the right couldn't be done today because of the location of the church. We had pulled the original building back. And then we, when Ken came up with this analysis, we did have Sue run it to make sure it still fit on the property. And there's still the room to, to put that third lane in. It does not, just so we're aware, we've not moved the buildings any further than they are currently because we had that extra room in there, which is, boy. The other thing is that, and I know it's been said, but just so nobody misses it, any of these improvements you've carried, what do you call it? A mask? Is that, the light? Requires a whole new lighting system, right?
Well, enough, enough great to the signal system, yes. A new mask.
A new mask. So you would be able to manipulate, if you will, in terms of some of the things you were asking. And there is a psychological part of it. Now, we heard a lot about School Street, so we did have Ken drive up and down School Street. And I don't want to put words in his mouth because what could be done, that's what we heard. School Street, paraphrasing Ken, is just a cut through. And unless you stop the cut-through traffic, there's no width to widen anything anywhere near that intersection. And it would take a significant change in driving patterns, such as turning some street into a one-way so people couldn't get to School Street, well beyond the scope of our project. We just only know, we did send Ken up there to look at it because we heard that there was a lot of issues with the School Street. But there really is not much you can do, nothing in terms of changing this intersection other than what we talked about, which will be some improvement to that, but not the type of improvement I'm sure people would love to see, which would be a significant widening of this, of School Street on the intersection, which is just not possible.
Thank you.
So, so we've been going after this for about an hour and 15 minutes. Abby, I just, I just want to understand maybe how we should kind of proceed. Now, do you guys, if I could ask the applicant, do you guys have further new data that you want to get before us tonight? I'm going to take a note, sorry. Do you have?
Not a presentation. Just quickly, just so it's on the record, about the affordability, the affordable units. We clearly.
So actually, before we do that, so you have the affordable unit, which I know we want to hear about. Is there anything else further you guys are looking to present tonight?
No.
Okay. And then do we have further commentary from any of the staff, folks tonight? From you, three comments, okay. Just trying to like set the pre, set the guard post a little bit here because we do have other things to hear tonight. We need the board to comment, we need the public to comment, so, okay. Fire away.
Okay. In terms of the affordability, we got a lot of clear that there would be three affordable units. What we're proposing now is that we would have one additional affordable unit at 321, is it? 321 Washington Street, which is the new building that currently has two affordable units. Bringing that to three out of the 12 units there would be affordable. And then we would, we're proposing that the other two affordable units would be located at 256 Washington Street, which are the two apartments that currently exist above what was formerly the ski shop. And these would all be rental units. And we would do it the same as we did before. In fact, your buyer requires you to do it as a local action units. We did see some commentary about trying to manipulate the income requirement for that. And just so it was clear, the, it's not the, and as I understood it, was because there was some, I think, misunderstanding as to the reason why we had suggested that we had some issues renting the existing affordable units. We don't believe it had anything to do with the rental amounts or how we were calculating that. It had more to do with my client vetting process. That every tenant, regardless, he treats everybody the same, we think it had to do with the vetting process itself. So there have been applicants who met the income requirements. And again, I can be honest with you, I don't know if we could even manipulate it if we wanted to under the local action program. They establish the rentals as part of that application. But it would be three rentals, which is the requirement, which is three units. But again, one in 321. There may be an opportunity at 321, I think maybe an opportunity that the additional unit there brings that up to three out of 12, which is 25%. So there may be an opportunity for the town to have all 12 units. I use the word may, the possibility. There's something that indicates that if you hit 25%, that they, they may allow all of the units to be counted towards your subsidized housing inventory as they do on a 40B type of project. So that's the proposal for the affordability, affordable component. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that. Okay, maybe, so, so I guess you're yourself?
For the record, Phil. So the applicant has provided updated plans, and they require significant more amount of engineering. But I do think the issue of the Blue Heart Tavern needs to be, I don't want to say confirmed, or to allow the applicant to progress on the engineering plans. The second thing is, is the adequacy of parking related to the various uses. So they, the, the changes included on the School Street side, eliminating, not, not including the Blue Heart Tavern, but they've added the community center on the rear of the library, which is a net change of about 11 spaces. So the way that the calculation is on the, on this, this side of the development is they've included 53 parking spaces for CBS. And they've included, they need seven parking spaces, no, eight, eight parking spaces for the library. They need, no, that's my group down there. They need 13 spaces for the community center. They need nine spaces for the Wild Blossom. Four spaces for Ferries Creamery, Creative Creamery, or whatever the reserve is designated. So those, that total right there is, is 34 spaces, which consumes the entirety of the municipal lot and, and then some. So I just want to alert you with that, you know. But that's, that's kind of the condition that it's going to be able to. Now, mind you, moving the Blue Heart Tavern, I think they were able to increase the parking there by half a dozen spaces. So, so that, that's something you gotta, I, I would, I would think we would want to make sure that you're okay with it going forward because that, that would change the layout of the situation. On the, on the East Street side, the project is proposing 103 spaces. Wait, let me see if I can. 103 spaces where 137 are required. Now, if you deduct the residential units, you take out the 36 that are underneath the parking, underneath the building, you have 101 spaces. You have 67 spaces where 101 would be required. And then, we've, we've kind of recommended that they have a loading space for the details in the back there, some sort of off, off-screen loading, which would reduce the count by three. So again, you would have 64 spaces where 101 is required. And I don't know if there's a discussion about a restaurant. And so that wasn't calculated in the, in the parking numbers at this time. So, that's, that's the three, two, two or three big issues.
So, the parking capacity is, by, by required, what do you mean by that exactly?
Based on your zone.
Based on your zone. That's just for, just leading the witness there a little bit. Okay. And is that calculation, what use group does that assume is in the MMO space? Does that just, does that just assume to be a retail function of some sort?
Uh, I don't have, I don't actually have the numbers.
Child care.
Say that again?
It is a separate, it's a separate category for child care? Okay. Because presuming, presumably that's a less, correct me if I'm wrong, a less park-intensive use than like a restaurant? Or?
Right.
Of CBS or something of that effect?
Okay.
Okay. And you may not know the answer to this question, but I mean, based on, I guess, hours of usage for all these different functions as we know them, do we suspect that that demand will be there 24/7, 24 hours, not 24 hours a day, but during business hours all day long? Or is that something that's, really not an analysis that can really be done well?
I, we, I haven't really looked up. They haven't really defined all the retail spaces.
Right. It's difficult because we don't have.
My experience with the CBSs are they have big parking lots for a few people.
Swoop lines, well.
So I, you know, and library use, I'm not sure what the, you know, the peak period to those are.
Yep. So we're looking at, on the East Street side, we're looking at like a roughly 34, 30, 30 to 35 space sort of deficiency, we'll call it, for lack of a better term. And then on the other side, we saying that the CB, that the, we're right at, we're right at capacity, basically?
Pretty, pretty close.
Pretty municipal lot. And the CBS is sort of a separate animal than that.
Right.
Okay. Okay. If that makes, if that makes sense. I think, it doesn't, I mean, I get it. I get what you're saying, so.
True. If you don't mind, I just want to point out when, when it's referenced, the required number of parking spaces, that refers to the underlying zoning district.
Right.
This overlay district refers to the underlying zoning, but allows you the option of changing those.
Currenters.
Flexible for anyone's.
Yes.
Parking requirements. Because it's a special overlay district.
Right. I understood, yeah. I understood. Okay. Does the applicant have any, any comments or response to these, to these comments, I guess?
We could respond. I just want to point out a couple of things. One, in terms of the East Street side, part of the deficiency and part of the issue was the request to go to condominium units, as opposed to, believe it or not, 28 apartments were generating less parking demand, plus they were unassigned spaces typically on the rentals. So there's more of a so-called sheer parking analysis. But to be honest with you, we didn't go crazy on the parking at this point because we don't know what's happening with that Blue Heart Tavern. And we've been running numbers and then rerunning them. And so we will be prepared. I mean, the points that were raised were good. I also think, I agree. You know, CBS is requiring a certain number of spaces. We're providing those from a, from a lease perspective. But I'd also like to come in here and say, by the way, we've looked at four, five, six CBSs in the area, and here's what we're seeing for a maximum. I think we can do the same thing for some of the other known uses on the site. The uses are not known. And we've run the analysis, by the way, on the mixed-use building, two ways. One is if it was retail uses and what we see as, as the real, real demand and what the same demand would be if in fact, X square feet of that building, as we've been told, people would like to see, was a nice, yeah, that's really a nice, nice restaurant. You know, a, a nice restaurant until we could, until you could have a comparison to the, where you can then make a decision. She's willing to have, you know, you have to know on a restaurant. And if it is a restaurant, then we're only going to allow so many seats or so many square feet.
Sure, okay.
Thank you for that.
I had a question regards to parking. Phil, during the review, did you, so we're, it seems to be that the, the parking for the ball field is no longer in the plan. So when you're reviewing that, the plan, how does that, how does that affect the overall? Did you, did you look at where those, where they'll park for the ballgame? Or are you just looking at the, the plan itself? Okay. It's just whatever's on site, yeah. And then the, the other thing is regard to MMO. Did we talk to MMO as far as what, what their use is? How many teachers they have? How many, how many spots they currently use? Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. So what I have to do now is, yeah, is move on to sort of plan, or sorry, board comments and questions for the applicant. Specifically, a few items. One is, we'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from each board member, their, their opinion on the Blue Heart Tavern decision so we can provide the applicant some direction on how we're leaning on that decision. Any, any further reaction to the fiscal review and to the traffic improvement plan specifically. Finally, I'd also like to hear from each board member what additional information and items of clarification you will need to render a decision on this project. We're nearing some milestones, we'll call them, in the coming months in terms of how this can move forward. And I think it's important for us to understand what gaps in information or clarification, et cetera, the applicant needs to provide to help us move forward, so. With that, now we'll open it up to anyone who'd like to go first. So I will, so shall we go through sort of issue by issue and then do the all?
All right, that's fine.
Sorry to interrupt, Detective Chair, but just one more point for staff comments. You did have, you had a couple more memorandums from some other boards and committees. You received a memo, you had a packet from the board, from the board of selectmen. They did want to point out the number of opportunities that they saw with this redevelopment project. They did want to point out the number of opportunities that they saw with this redevelopment project. In their memo, they did touch on, they are currently still in the process of negotiating the land disposition agreement, so that is ongoing at this time. They do, they would like to see the planning board uphold the zoning bylaw requirements for providing the minimum of fifteen percent required in the affordable unit. They would also like to see a traffic improvements considered, in particular, the improvement to either adding a dedicated left turn lane on the southbound lane of Washington Street to turn onto East Street, either with a dedicated lane or a left signal change. They would also emphasize improvements for maximizing the green space and the public community gathering space with this project. And with regards to the Blue Heart Tavern, they do recognize the local historic aspects of that building, but if there are going to be project funds dedicated to restoring the building, they would prefer to see the building moved to the front of the lot. Made a point from the Board of Selectmen. You also received a memorandum from the Housing Partnership, also supporting three affordable units to be provided in Islington. You did also receive a letter yesterday from the Housing Authority in Waha, Westwood Affordable Housing Associates, supporting the proposal for three affordable units. They did also ask that you would consider a lower area minimum income requirement, and staff has responded to that and the housing agent provided a memo to you and does not recommend lowering the eighty percent threshold. We think that the bylaw is written with the eighty percent area median income. That's the way the bylaw is written, and we'd like to make sure we have residents fill those units. And if you have a lower income restriction, that usually only works well when you have larger projects where they have some sort of subsidy to help make up the difference to the owner. And then, one more, I think we do, I have the Chairman of the Historic Commission here. If you want to hear from them right on the Blue Heart Tavern while you're discussing that.
So, do we need to have more people speak to us, I guess? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm kind of grasping how to proceed.
If you want to hear from the Historic Commission, they are here tonight.
All right, well, since the Blue Heart Tavern, I think is going to be our first item to discuss,
Just walk through quickly through a slideshow that I came here and... Okay, this is working now? All right, thank you. So this is a slideshow that I put together about the Blue Heart Tavern. And the Blue Heart Tavern is for anyone who's lived in Westwood for any period of time. It's an iconic building. There are only a hundred and seventy historic buildings in Westwood, and those are buildings that were built before nineteen-ten, and this is one. This is probably the oldest building in Westwood, it was built in seventeen-forty. If you want to go to the next slide.
I'm just saying, closer to your mouth for folks at home.
Okay, thank you. So, Blue Heart Tavern was constructed in seventeen-forty, and it's one of Westwood's most historically significant structures. Next slide. Islington, which was formerly known as Sprintdale, was first settled in sixteen-seventy when John Dean received a twenty-five acre land brand and built the house on East Street. Subsequent generation of the Dean family were instrumental in the development of the Islington community. Next slide. Blue Heart Tavern was built in seventeen-forty by Jeremiah Dean, and he was formerly a gristmill farmer and grandson of John Dean. The tavern was built on Kings Highway, which was laid out in sixteen-fifty. The Kings Highway runs, you can see all the way down the east coast. Next slide. In seventeen-forty-six, Jeremiah Dean opposed William Ellis's petition for a license to operate a tavern on High Street. The Selectmen eventually permitted Ellis's tavern to operate on High Street. It's still standing on High Street. Next slide. You can see George Washington slept here. So that's a very significant part of the history of the Blue Heart Tavern. In seventeen-seventy-two, Jeremiah Dean sold the Blue Heart Tavern to Ebenezer Gay. Throughout the eighteen-eighties, throughout the eighteen-hundreds, there were as many as twenty inn keepers, and the tavern remained a popular stop on the road between Boston and New York. Next slide. Blue Heart Tavern remains one of the oldest dividing structures in Westwood today. Next slide. The building has a center entrance with a neocolonial replacement door and surround. Next slide. Windows flanking the entrance are multi-light storefront windows. Next slide. The second-story windows have six over-one sash set in slightly projected molded frames. Next. The house has typical narrow corner post. Next. Several examples of period woodwork are found throughout the structure. You can see the fire, some other architectural structures. Over the years, modifications have been made to accommodate various commercial uses on the first floor. Next. The second floor has been predominantly occupied as residential space. Blue Heart Tavern served as Alfred Magletta's real estate office throughout the late twentieth century. It was most recently used as an office for Todd Sullivan Construction. The building was temporarily relocated to Nine School Street in two thousand and sixteen to allow for the construction of a new mixed-use building on its own site. I can put this on, it's stale materials. Anybody have any questions about the Blue Heart Tavern?
Do you know when the last time was that it was a tavern? Like the when it was, maybe anyone applies a question?
Good question, no, I don't have.
I saw the tongue-in-cheat said that Washington slept there. Is there any proof that Washington slept there?
I think people feel that it's very likely that he did. I don't think it's just being loosely thrown out there. I think there is strong suspicions that Washington did sleep there.
Do you agree with the builder that there is no significant structure left that is original to the building?
No, I don't.
Can you elaborate on that?
I think this is something that you feel passionate about. This building has been here since seventeen-forty, and it has seen so many historic things, and has been so much a part of the town. It breathes and lives with the town itself. You lose these buildings, and every time you lose a building like this, the identity of the town loses something as well.
Okay, are you referring to the actual building or the location was that? Do we have a consensus that the only original parts of the building from seventeen-forty are the frame of the building?
You know, I have not made a thorough study of whether the original structure is still there. I would have to do that before I could say with any confidence.
Thank you.
And how would you feel about a historical restoration versus if just the structure itself was used and, and refaceted to a more modern, modern look? Because obviously that has a cost implication. I would just, I would like to know your opinion on that.
We'd like to see the structure preserved. Exactly how it's preserved, that would be, you know, open to debate. To me, the important thing is we don't lose that building. There's a lot of history there. We lose it, gone forever.
How would you feel about parts of the building incorporated into a new structure?
I would have to see what that meant, give a detail of it, clarify it. Obviously, I'd like to see the building intact, but I'm willing to investigate all of your options.
Thank you.
Chief, if you would take the podium for a couple of questions?
You've been all through this building, and what is your opinion of the originality of anything in the building?
I don't see really anything that's original besides the couple mantles that are in there. The outside of the building, the shingles of the last twenty years, the windows of the last fifteen years, the fireplaces have gone obviously from the roof. There's really nothing, in my opinion, that's historic. When I see a historic building, I looked at the old Bed Baker House the other day, actually this morning I drove up there. That, to me, yeah, it's an historic building, because everything is original. This, there's nothing that's original on this building. So I don't see really any historic significance on the outside of this building. The use, I can, I can argue, yes, the use of the tavern, but not the building itself.
What type of frame is it? Do you know?
It's a two-by-four frame outside.
A blue frame or a gray frame or... My question is, just thinking aloud, how easy would it be to strip it down to the frame and basically sell it as a frame?
I think it would fall down.
Could take it down stick by stick?
Yeah, I guess the...
Again, just thinking aloud.
Yes, stick by stick. Yes, stick by stick, you mean to move it to a different location, cut it in half, cut it in six pieces? What are we saying?
So, to...
Believe me, we've looked at, spent a lot of time, a lot of money, and we've gone nineteen months trying to figure out what to do with this thing. We want to save as much as anybody else, but, as you see, it's hard to say.
What are the conditions of the mantles now? How many, how many mantles are there?
Two.
There are two. And the condition of them?
One is cracked, and the other one is just peeling off the wall. What I mean by peeling, the cordles broken off. That's how we bought the property. The pictures she shows, I don't know when, do you know when you got those pictures?
Actually, I would say two years ago.
When you walked, so you walked through with me?
Yeah. Actually, Peter and I both walked through, gave you those pictures.
Yeah, they are, yeah, Steve Ollof and I were there too.
Yeah, I remember Peter. Peter, he was, he was there, I don't know if he's around anymore, but he was one of the ones that said that the mantles were the only thing that were original.
The wings clothing?
The wings clothing is not original. It's, it's all, it's all shipwrecked. Didn't have the funny move effect back in the eighteen-hundreds.
Okay, have any...
Well, I actually may ask a little more. So, I guess like Mike was kind of getting towards, I'm trying to think, is there some use for this, for the building that could be done? It feels like it's very expensive because of the need to preserve the whole thing. But what I've been thinking is, I want to find some way to preserve this historic use of the building, and wouldn't that be better than just having it gone completely? I'm not particularly excited about relocating it somewhere, you know, Obit Baker House has its own history, but it's, it's a struggle to find a use for it really. And this, on the other hand, has a historic use that could be an anchor to the project. Like it could be, after this project is done, there will be another opportunity to put up a new tavern-type thing in here. But while it's here, it has the potential to add a lot of value to the overall project. I just wondered if we think creatively, is there anything you can imagine that you could do with that that would serve both purposes? That would preserve the historic use, if it didn't require millions of dollars of renovation, but if you could find a way to use parts of it, come up with a design like what's going on with the community center, but a little more preservation of what the tavern looked like?
I just think it could preserve some of these parts in the new addition to the One Word Library, that new space.
Yeah, there's kind of a, I mean, it feels like the thing, things have to adapt in order to survive, really, and that's the economic reality of this situation. So I'm trying to think, is there some way to adapt that building in a way that adds to this, that's a positive for the community here? I agree.
Does anyone, I know, well, two things, I guess. Abby, you mentioned that Steve had a couple of comments that he perhaps would like us to touch upon, probably on this point, even in his absence?
Right, Steve couldn't be here tonight, but he did give me his comments on the Blue Heart Tavern. He would like to see the building preserved either as part of this project, on this project site, or in another guaranteed location. He would like that to be considered as part of this project.
Did he voice a further opinion about its sighting on this particular project?
I think he'd rather, I mean, he would not want to see it demolished, so he'd rather see it in the back than have it demolished. I think his preference would be for it to be restored and moved to the front on Washington Street. He had said that at the last hearing, so he would like to see it preserved in some way.
All right, thanks. I mean, if you also hear from the other board members in terms of this building's sightings, I know that's part of, and certainly, certainly, Mr. Cruzio wants to hear our commitment to preserving, our commitment to enforcing some kind of preservation of the building, period, and also where, you know, where and in what conditions. So if you, are there any further opinions or comments about whether it should be on the street, off the street? You know, better to preserve it at all or rather preserve it on the street front? Because I think we're hearing pretty strongly that the street front, some street, you know, street frontage location is not really optimal for the planning of the site.
Yeah, I echo Steve's regards with that, more, something a little bit more, more prominent. And then what Dave was saying is, if we can think outside of the box here for some type of a project that it might be able to use for. Community space, I think, might be more of a challenge to replace what this project proposes with the loss of the community space. But I would, I would like to see this, to echo your presentation, I think if you lose it, it's gone forever, and that would be quite a shame for the town, I believe. That's all.
Okay. And we have, you know, before, as Abby mentioned, a memorandum for the Board of Selectmen, which is suggesting, I guess I'll say, that they're interested in seeing its preservation. However, they do voice the concern that if, you know, if it takes some extraordinary investment to preserve it, then it should be preserved, I believe, in a location, a more prominent location on the property, which... So we're sort of inherent conflicts here, and I'm trying to, I hope you can see, we're trying to help you get some direction. And I do want to definitely thank the Historic Commission for putting that presentation, I think that was very helpful. I would offer a little constructive criticism, that would have been helpful, I've had seen that perhaps before the building was moved. I feel like the ship started sailing when he picked up that building and moved it across the street, so I feel like that's something we're going to have to struggle, we may struggle with a little bit to reconcile. So I feel like that's something we're going to have to struggle, we may struggle with a little bit to reconcile, given that it's sort of been disrupted in a way already. So not exactly sure how to get better clarity for you, for you, Giorgio, to proceed on this point. I would say that personally, I think it's a, for the planning of the site, it doesn't make a ton of sense to keep it on the site. And unfortunately, I know you've been working very hard to find your home for it, either via a new owner or a, some other location in town, et cetera. I, my sense is that the best way to move, move with this issue without a clear directive, a clear collective directive, would be to try to reincorporate on that, if we're going to preserve it, then it'd be preserved in the backside of the site, the way we saw it in previous plans. It's not ideal, but I feel like that might be the only way to preserve it based on what you've said regarding CBS's lack of enthusiasm for its place along Washington Street or along School Street. So with no further comment on that, I guess I'd like to address, hopefully address quickly, the point from the Board of Selectmen regarding the 15% affordable housing directive or requirement, Abby or someone else in our group, would you just explain exactly what that means? I feel like we haven't talked about that topic in the context of a 15% minimum.
So the bylaw requires you, for projects proposing even more residential units, that 15% of those units must be affordable units in perpetuity through local action units that are approved through the town and that's approved through the state housing department so that they are subsidized housing inventory. The bylaw allows you to consider, or requires the units to be provided within the project area or another alternative that's acceptable to the planning board and serving the town's housing needs. And so this application proposes that not within the specific mixed-use building in the condos, but their proposal is for three, a total of three rental units, one at 321 Washington Street and two at the 256 Washington Street. And staff does support this consideration, or would recommend that to you because that allows the additional unit at 321 brings that building up to 25% in that building that exists today. That would then be, allow the entire building, 12 units, to be counted on the town's subsidized housing inventory. And then the two additional units would be provided at 256 Washington Street. So essentially, if you entertain that option, that would give the town a total of 14 new units to add to your inventory. So that's essentially more beneficial than providing the units within the condo building.
Okay, so just so I'm, so we're clear and everyone realizes clear, by proceeding with the proposition, we would be far exceeding the 15% minimum? Not in actual units, but in units that are accounted? Is that a correct way to say that or no?
You would have to, it'd be meeting the 15%. Well, it's an alternative, it's not within the project site, but it's an alternative that meets the town's housing needs.
Okay, so I guess, well, another way to ask that is 15% of 28 is like 4.2 units, right, actually?
18 units, 18 units.
Is it, are there 18 or, sorry, how many units are on the?
18 in the condo business, so that's three units required.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it, okay, all right. All right. A couple items from the Selectmen, I will speak on this, but I'll ask the other board members to comment. There's a lot of interest around the left turn off of Washington Street, whether it's via a light timing adjustment or an actual lane. I thought that's probably something that would hold a lot of weight. And I think, I guess we'd look to the engineering, various engineers in the room to make the best recommendation in terms of other improvements to that, to that intersection that are most beneficial. I think, I will, speaking for myself, I think the results of this traffic study, perhaps a little surprising in terms of what the actual issues are versus the more psychological issues we'll say. So again, thank you for that. Other comments in the board on the traffic?
Yeah, I was also, I was also discouraged by the peer review, I mean, it was a good peer review, but I was discouraged to see that you ended up with an F on all the configurations. But I still think we should, I would support, I think I like the option three because it solves, or at least it tries to address two significant issues. One is that left turn and two is the backup of traffic on East Street by providing better flow on the left off of East Street onto Washington. So even if, you know, the numbers show only 10 people, but that's probably because you know all it takes is one car making a left turn to turn it into a one-lane road. And if you have the opportunity for that one car to turn with an arrow, maybe that's going to be a significant. And most of the people who are doing that are probably living in the neighborhood there. So anyway, I think that was a reasonable option. I did want to comment back on the affordable housing a little bit. And that's, that it isn't, so what's proposed is not the same or better than what was required in the bylaw. The requirement was for three affordable owners, well, three units out of the 18. And what we would be going from is three ownership, two-bedroom units to three apartments. And yes, there's definitely a benefit to the town in terms of having that additional apartment in the existing building that will add to the subsidized housing index. But I think in terms of a benefit to the overall community, there's a great, there's a need for this type of housing where it's an ownership opportunity for an affordable unit. And just to kind of like, what affordable means, just to give a real example, is that if you're, you're looking at a two-person household at 80% of the area median income, that's about $62,000 a year. So that would be the, you'd have to make less than $62,000 a year if you're a two-person household to be able to qualify for one of those units. And then the challenge is that to be affordable, it needs to be, your gross income, 30% of your gross income goes towards that. So you can imagine different scenarios for people, but it's, what it turns into for a one-bedroom apartment is 15, 64 a month. So that's, doesn't sound very affordable, but that's because of the narrow range there due to, you have to have enough money to afford to, for the 30% based on the income. So when I look at this proposal, I'm saying going from a requirement of three condo units to three one-bedroom apartments, it's not quite the same thing. There's definitely, something is offset by having one of those be an apartment that allows four units to qualify. So I do more supportive of a combination of things there, like if you could do two condos in there. And that's kind of what I think led some to think about changing the income limits too. Is there a way to create greater value to people who could actually live in these units versus just affecting the calculations on the subsidized housing index? So that's, I'd like to see it back to having a couple of two-bedroom condos at least, because it's a different type. It could support a single parent with a child, you know, or two. It could be, it provides something that, most of these affordable units are just one- and two-bedroom apartments. And this is a unique chance to have a couple of ownership opportunities in Islington.
I just echo what you said, Dan, thanks. Do you have any further? On that or anything else?
As long as we can stick to our 15%, wherever it is in the project, he's fine.
Abby, do you feel like there's anything else we should specifically address directly as a board in relation to what we've heard tonight or what we've heard from other groups in town?
Well, it sounds like you're still a little bit undecided on items, the Blue Heart Tavern in particular. You know, if it helps you at all, I just want to point out that the Blue Heart Tavern was moved to a temporary location that was discussed and was made a condition of the 2016 application for across the street. So it's been two years at the planning board and the applicant has been looking at opportunities of what to do with the Blue Heart Tavern. And essentially, it's still, the status is still the same. For this section of the bylaw, it gives consideration to historic preservation, but it's not a strict requirement. And same with the RFP that was put out by the town, there was consideration for preserving the Blue Heart Tavern, but it wasn't made a strict requirement that the building must remain. So just while you're thinking about that, you should just consider what other impacts to the project saving it would have. Because the cost of restoring the building will come out of the project at some level. So the amount of money that goes back to the town for restoring the community space, the parking, and just all those other items, it'll affect the total project.
Yeah, I mean, there are also some comments about further emphasis of green space and community gathering space. I mean, obviously, those things all cost more money than rentable space or, you know, don't have the same return as rentable space in the project. So I guess I would add to that, to the other board members of that, should I take it into mind too, about where funds are being directed? Personally, I don't, I'm speaking as just a single member, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion with Blue Heart Tavern. I think this project has come a long way and we've worked through a lot of different pieces that are, that steer the project in directions. And I would say, like, my take is that probably, its absence from the site is probably, probably makes it a stronger project from a planning and from a, just an efficiency standpoint, from parking, from asset of parking, from having more green space and buffer zone. And so I would, you know, I would, it's, its sort of disposition would not be a hangup for me as a sort of approval point, I guess I would say, so, okay. I think, if there are no further board comments or questions?
In general?
In general.
Yeah, I have, one thing that sticks out to me on this plan is that when I look at it, I see the playground. And I just know having, you know, dropped off many times at preschool, this, if I was dropping a child off at a playground and there were parking spaces around it, I'd be concerned. And is there, is there any issue with, with that playground, like from a, like is it, is that realistic from a, from a plan? Like is this, is this something that can, can even happen at a, at a school? I haven't seen this before, so I don't even know if it's legal to have a playground next to a.
Well, that's, I think, we hadn't heard, I just heard anecdotally that you can't, that it's just not legal to have a playground in a parking lot, but I don't know.
I don't know for sure, but I think there's one on East Street right now, right? So it was illegal then, it's still illegal now.
I will do public comments, I suspect you have some pertinent information, just identify yourself.
As far as the playground goals, there is one on East Street that's down behind our building.
I just want to grab the, want to grab the microphone so people can hear you.
But that was grandfathered in because we've been there 40 something years. But as far as the state's concerned, the regulations say that we can't have a playground in a parking lot. I don't know if there's any stipulation that if you put up barriers or something like that, then we.
Just while you're up there, so the, the space is also different from what you currently have? So is, is that fine? Like, did you, did you already talk about all this with?
This is the first I've seen of the blueprint and I see the 4,000 square feet of space. My math says we need a little bit more than that. We right now currently have 9,000 square feet, which includes our playground at the I C C. But certainly some of that space can be cut down, but I think we might need a little more than the 4,000 because I'm talking classrooms, what I added up for classrooms and a small office and didn't even include bathrooms. Things like that, which was within the 4,000 square feet. So I haven't seen the blueprints, I don't know, this is the first time. As far as the playground goals, I mean, 1,425 square feet to be made, 1,425 square feet. You were close to that, I think you said 14, but I think the state doesn't give us too much.
And the reason why I bring that up is if it's not, if you need, if you're required to have more, then we need to add it in to that, to this plan so that we know what we're talking about, because there seems to already be a parking item here.
Right, right.
Oh yeah, so as far as, we talked about drop-offs and employees, so how many parking spaces do you currently use for teachers?
Actually, we have right now 25 parking lots. My teachers don't even park there because we would not be able to, we park across the street. I have 14 teachers, 14 staff members there every day, I don't know where they go park.
So they park at the municipal parking lot?
We park right across the street from the CBS and the municipal parking lot. Because we have 67 parents coming in every day in the wadi and then to pick up, so.
Yeah, thank you for sharing your thoughts. So, so how will you transmit information as far as requirements through Abby? Like how do we move forward with that part?
Well, we have met, the town did invite us to meet, I'm sure that you'll all get in just for two. Yeah, we met and we kind of talked about a few things, what we talked about and, you know, square footage and things like that. So I would hope we could meet again and maybe talk a little bit about.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I would say that's absolutely essential for this project to move forward. We've been, the board has been moving ahead, assuming that the I L O has what it needs, the playground is what it wants to be, all these kinds of things. It's a little bit shocking to hear that maybe there's some disconnect there, so that would be great to have a definitive conversation about those needs.
Thank you, we appreciate your insistence for that.
And then why don't I just say my other comments, you had mentioned items as we move forward over the next couple of weeks. One, as far as the open space, like currently when I, when I look at the plan, what I did is, I didn't see a comparison earlier on of what, there's an earlier, there's an earlier slide where you have what is currently the ownership. And when I look at the proposal, the town doesn't own any land essentially over on the East Street side. And then when you look at the proposal for the School Street side, I did some quick math and it looks like the parcel of land, including municipal parking lot, is essentially, it's very similar in area when I look at the, the engineer plans to what the current municipal parking lot is now. So it seems like where the town is losing a lot of land in this transaction here. And then one of the other items that was, is now under town ownership is, it appears to be wetlands, so I don't even know how usable that open space is. I went back to watch the visioning session when neighbors were looking at this project and they wanted open space so that they could sit and read and do whatever. But the current plan, when I look at it, is it, it doesn't have that. So moving forward, I'd like to see some progress in that direction. And then the other item, which I think is essential is, which I hope doesn't get overlooked, is the ball field where we have, we have, that ball field is used. We currently had a number of spaces behind the library and, and now there's none. So I haven't heard of what is, where do those families park and safely get across the street? In addition to that, the School Street playground is used, folks use the municipal parking lot. How do those children safely get to School Street? So those are, those are the things that I'd like to see in the future.
That reminds me of a couple more comments. I did, in terms of the pathways and pedestrian access and all, I appreciate the, on the East Street side, that looked like a big improvement in how the path of walkways were done. On the, on the School Street side, I was, I was less, because who's going to be walking around the perimeter up there was my thought. And so I just felt that you kind of need more, safer way to get from the buildings to each other. You wouldn't go out to the perimeter and then walk around the edge of that, so that was the other thing. The other thing I just wanted to say was that this. The other thing I just wanted to say was that this process, I mean, I, at this stage, we don't have a lot of, it takes a long time for these hearings and we try, we have so many things that we want to talk about that we don't, we kind of focus on the critical stuff, but I do recognize this has been going on for a couple of years now and I'm amazed at the, at how many iterations that this has gone through and I'm impressed that Mr. Portizzi, that you, you know, engage with the town in this way. And it's, you know, it's, I think there's a lot of things we would like to do and like to have with this, but I just wanted to thank you for continuing to engage in this process and just to, you know, listen to our concerns here because we all want to come up with something where we can talk about all the benefits of this project and it's not just, well, we let this happen, but that we actually came together with a solution that is going to benefit the neighborhood and have a positive benefit to the town and that people are going to be excited about it. And in order to get it approved, in order for it to go through the town meeting process, it's going to have to be something that there are lots of pieces of this where people say, that's going to be great, I'm really looking forward to that. And so I think there are, there are pieces like that here, but that's the spirit in which a lot of this criticism or this sort of critical ideas comes, that we want something that is a genuine benefit to the neighborhood in many different ways. So I just wanted to say that.
You have one more, okay, we have your quick response and then we'll turn with the public comment.
Two issues because we can't really move forward without it. One is the Blue Heart Tavern. Hopefully, we're meeting in a couple of weeks. And there is two options. One is the Blue Heart Tavern, it's not on the site, or the Blue Heart Tavern is on the back of the site, the original location. Those are the two options. Any other manipulation does not work for the applicant, his future tenants. So we'll, again, give you a comparison of the next one, but it has to be one of those two or the project from our perspective can't move forward. The second thing is the affordable unit length, two, three, whatever it may be. My client went to condos after a long process of listening to people who asked and requested that we go to condominiums. In an eighteen-unit project or a project this small, to make the condominium units ownership, you know, ownership affordable, the local action program renders the project uneconomic. It's as simple as that. Don't hold me to the numbers, but I was told that a condominium units in a project, somebody told me, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would probably be the potential sales price, and that is far less than the cost of actually building the units. So renders it, so when it was apartments, we had more flexibility with parking, when it was apartments, even though there was more, it worked with the affordable component being fifteen percent inside the project. But affordable, which is why the original application said we would give you, I think it was one of the condominium units, we wanted to get it to three and it made sense, we thought from a town perspective, to move them to where we proposed. But again, we need a decision on that because if in fact the board is saying, no, it's going to be two or three condominium units, then we may, well, we won't get five, but probably go back to the apartments because it fits within the same configuration of the building. What we did is we manipulated the building to make eighteen two-bedroom units out of what was twenty-eight one-bedroom apartments. And then, again, they say frees up parking, frees up, allows us to do the affordable components within the project itself. So we need decisions on that because from my client's perspective, the Blue Heart Tavern is key and what happens with affordability is key.
Okay. I think I'd say, Peter, I want to thank you for that, some of that project history, especially the condominium switch and the, and how that impacts the parking and the entire physical health, I guess, of the project. So...
So you're saying that one condo is, makes it not physically beneficial? You mentioned two and three.
So when it comes to the affordable component, there's also a bank that we got to answer to. So when it came to the affordable component, with one, you would only get one for the entire project. With the apartment scenario, you would get three, you'd get one, one more at 321, which the banks, the bank agreed to. And you get two at 256, which the bank agreed to. The bank will not agree to more than that. Financially, it won't work, it would only work with one, two-bedroom condo in the entire project.
But it's, but the, you know, that's the thing, I never, I don't understand this uneconomic argument because, yeah, I get it, if all you were doing was building a condominium, then you've got to subsidize the affordable units for the other units, but you're not. You're building a whole development here, multi-use buildings. There was talk originally of totally restoring the Blue Heart Tavern and costing at your expense. And so, I mean, it's all, the money is, like, what's the grand total of the whole thing? And, you know, we could be able to shift things around to make it work. If the town decides it has to be these affordable units, then it probably comes out of something else, you know, right? Or it's probably there's some other thing. So it's not, I think when we focus on the individual pieces, it's easy to just say, oh, that's impossible, but...
Unfortunately, it is impossible. What I mean by that is that we can do three condos or we can do three, but then it lessens the number on the town side. So we proposed one, one million seven twenty-five, so we've got to lower that number to get three condos in. So again, it has to work, it works both, it has to work financially for us and the banks and also for the town. So by doing the three condos, I got to lower the number on the town end of it.
Because I think from the town side of it, when we look at it, is the town has to use that 1.7 to move a library, renovate the library, and then whatever's left over, build a community center. So, and we don't have any, do we have any estimates on, have we gotten any?
No work.
Because that's, I mean, for me, that's critical information to move forward is to know what is that new community center going to look like or is it off the table altogether? Because the town's giving up a lot of square footage here on prime real estate in this proposal. When I look at it, I went through and highlighted both sides and now it's quite visible what the change is. And I didn't see this at the visioning session. I just, and Dave, I echo your concern also, this has to pass at town meeting. This doesn't, the residents have to vote to transfer land. So...
It's, I'm just, yeah, I think it's, I think we may have residents who stand up and say, we don't want all that stuff, we don't want the affordable things, you know, who knows what the, how it all shakes out, but we're trying, I was thinking about this, like, it's really not our job to figure out the money. It's to say, here's the best thing we can do. And, you know, that's, if it's, I don't want to say, oh, the town should pay for subsidizing this, that, the other, but it's, let's come up with the thing that people want in terms of planning here and then figure out how to pay for it or who pays for the breakdown. I think that's, I'd like to see what we've described, so.
I think I'll just make one, maybe a quick comment or response, I think it's probably, I think we really need to move on to public comment tonight so we aren't here when the sun breaks through the sky in the morning. I think it's important, I know the topic of sort of what is the town getting out of this has been a topic that's been coming up since the visioning session and not before. It's important, again, in that context, to remember the renovation work and improvement work that is going to be at the town's doorstep, at the community center and at the library if we do nothing to them at all as part of this project. And that is, I think, being overlooked a little bit. Granted, there is maybe a disparity when it's sort of land versus land, but the town purchased those properties with, for the intent, purpose of using them for a strategic move in town and that's something that is sort of part of the project history, which we discussed many times at the task force meetings, so I think we should just not forget that. So I think on that point, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Again, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address and direct your questions to the chair.
Hi, Bill Zley from 48 School Street. First, I'd like to just make a comment on the Blue Heart Tavern. When we moved it from the original site, I think you lost the historical value of the Myself, I've been involved in architectural digs, I've been involved with Lexington Men and Lexington Historical Society, they used me for the historical commission to identify revolutionary war, pre-revolutionary war sites, so I do have an idea of what I'm talking Buildings, we try to move them back to where they came from and reconstruct them. I don't think the developer wants to have them. But the cost to renovate the Blue Heart Tavern back to its original structure would cost, I would say between four million dollars, somewhere in that vicinity. But again, you'd want to back at the original site because that's where its value is. Now, as far as this project, this plan, the developer has, gave us his plan, but I think this is a joint venture with the town and I haven't seen the town's plan. And how can you tell this gentleman what you're going to do as far as giving him the property without saying to the residents, we're going to do this, but this is going to cost you so much money to build a new community center, we're going to move the library if it can be moved, who knows, might fall apart in the move. So we have none of those questions answered unless somebody here can answer them.
I can tell you through this live work and the land disposition.
Okay. I'm just surprised that we've got this far and we haven't even sat down and put a plan together as far as the town goes out. And I have a bunch of other questions here, but I'll save them for next time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is June Cassidy, I'm at 628 High Street in Westwood. And mostly what I have is questions and I'm not even sure that you can answer them, but the first part of the question was about the real estate, the taxes coming back to the town. But what I'm not sure about is who CVS pays rent to now? Who, I know that M O, or I believe M O pays rent to the town as well, so those would be lost rents is my understanding because those would now go to the developer, but I might be wrong. And then with the retail establishments, I mean, certainly the developer gets the sales price for the condos, I'm not sure what happens with the retail stores and the rent that they would pay. So those are just questions I'm not asking, but I, I mean, I'm not asking for an answer today, but I'm confused about that, you know, all the good things on the tax, real estate side, but I don't understand the rents and what's going away and what would accrue to the town or the developer. I believe nobody's mentioned it, but it sounds like the tailor shop is just disappearing altogether, being demolished. And then I also agree with the comments on the library and the community center that needs to be built, it seems very nebulous financially at this point. Then lastly, on the entrances and exits on both sides of the street, the, my question is if I'm coming out of the CVS onto Washington Street, it sounds like I can no longer take a left onto, I mean, not that it would be great today, but I'm assuming that it will be impossible to do it later. So you're going to have people that go in there and then the only thing that they can do is take a right out of it. And I couldn't tell also from the drawings, there's a pretty big bus stop there, which would impact that right lane, the straight line of travel if a bus is stopped. And then there's five or six cars backed up, so I just couldn't tell that. And then my last concerns on that whole thing is if there is an exit onto School Street, I would advocate maybe that it is only for, you know, the trucks, the CVS trucks, because I think if you've got other people exiting onto School Street, it's going to be crazy. And I'm also concerned, I don't have an answer either, but I'm concerned that on both sides of the street, there is only one entrance and exit. So on the CVS side, I can come in onto Washington Street and I have to exit on Washington Street. And now with the East Street side, you're closing off the entrance onto Washington Street, so you only have one entrance and exit on that side too, on East Street. It just seems like very problematic in both cases.
I feel there might be actual short answers to most of those questions. Georgie, do you mind speaking to some of those?
So the entrance and exits on East Street, on the East Street side, the one on Washington Street still exists, that will run in the same spot. On the School Street side, you can exit an exit onto Washington Street and there's also an exit on the backside of the CVS building going on the School Street.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, that it's not going to fly.
Okay. The other question was regarding...
The rents from M O and rents from CVS.
So CVS currently today is my tenant, it's not the town's tenant. M O today is the town's tenant and at a later point, they will turn into my tenant. Correct. And...
Retail?
The retail below condo units, that would be my retail as well, that would be me rent, not the town. That's it.
You filled that out, the bus stop, does that affect any of the parking spaces or can you, or is that fine? Does the current bus stop go to Washington right in front of Cafe Debo?
I think it's moved to north along, along Washington. If you look at the...
It's not in the lane, so it will affect projects because it's on... That's what we're doing now.
I'm Mary Layton and I live at 136 School Street and my question is about the CVS parcel. Okay, I can't tell on the parcel what's the town's, what part of that parcel belongs to the town. What condition will the town receive this parcel and how much will it cost the town to develop it? I think that's, you know, and some of the other people already kind of refer to what I'm talking about. Another thing is coming up East Street, going to 1A to take a left to go to Roach Brothers. I come down from School Street all the time. If you want to go across, I've been there almost fifty years doing it, so I got it down to a science, but if you don't keep going, you can't get across. One guy went right into, I kept going, he went right into the fire station, the old fire station, because if you don't keep being aggressive, you don't get across. So when the green arrow stops, they still go. And if the first car doesn't go, you don't get out at three or four. So once the, if, once the green arrow stops and you change it, it should go to a red so we can get out. Now, I don't know if you got the answers to my other CVS, but I wouldn't mind seeing on that little thing up there, what part of that, part of that parcel belongs to the town.
I think that, yeah, that diagram's going to come back up for you right now.
So on the, what part is the town, where would the borders be? Do you know?
Well, I'm here, it's the middle.
Oh, okay. So everything behind that?
That would be town.
Okay.
Town in the back.
And what about that park and above?
This would be, this is the park.
Okay. But on the right-hand side, above, like say, the library in the back, is that the town's parking too?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any prices yet on how much it would cost the town to develop this land? To put the foundation in, to put the building in? To, will it come to more than the 1.7 million dollars that they're going to get?
I think we've heard that we don't have any information yet, but you can speak to it more elaborately, I think.
The Board of Selectmen is responsible for the land disposition agreement, and they are reviewing with an architect plans for building community center, for moving Wetman Hall, and for developing the area on that side. Those plans are not complete yet, so it's a process that we're working on. I do believe it will cost more than the amount of money that was offered to date. And I believe the Selectmen will negotiate for enough money to get that done. So we're still working on exactly what those figures are. And once we know what it will cost, we will discuss that with the developer and bring back the answer to the planning board.
Thank you.
Excuse me, hello, I'm Joel Layden, 136 School Street. And I was, here to talk about the force coming out of the property. I'm glad that people have requested already, because that was really one of my biggest concerns. But going beyond that, I'd like to read about one thing that I spoke to before. It seems to me that the library is being moved as a sole benefit of the development and this town has to pay. Using on for the cost allocation that has been used to present the project to be very profitable towards the town. I think there's other ways to look at that. The developer is intending to sell some condos and to rent properties and market values. And those values are supported by what the town has provided in terms of a social environment, including education, safety, fire, and all of the town services. So I think it's, if, he's looking to recover market values that are based on those total costs, that when we look at what his project is going to bring into the town, while it's useful to look at incremental costs, it's also, I think, would be a strength to look at the total cost of town services applied to his property, his intent to build. And I think that would radically change the number that this project is going to offer the town in terms of annual profit. If he has to cover the actual cost of town services as opposed to some incremental cost of town services. That's it.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Jennifer Ferrar, 130 Phillips Road. And I'm not sure if we've discussed this at all, but I don't see anywhere in the plan where the current Youth and Family Services, which is in the ICC, which I think is around 4,000 square feet, maybe, where that is going in the new plan. It says community space, but is that what they're going into?
The community space we have today is the ICC, and that is currently the home to Youth and Family Services and also has some multipurpose space. The new community space would be the same. It would be the home to Youth and Family Services, and it would have multipurpose community space as well.
So is Youth and Family Services okay with 2,000 square feet?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, is there, is there anyone else who'd like to approach the podium? So I guess for the applicant, our plan was to continue this meeting to the 27th of February. But I sense that we, there are some directives that maybe are not clear enough at this moment in time. Is that safe to say? Or based on what you've heard since an hour ago? Really, sure, yeah. I have to have my hands on this cold table all the time, so. So anyway, aside from my attire, I know we were hoping to get, provide some better direction on the Blue Heart Tavern tonight. I don't know if we've really done that. I don't know if we're going to provide more than what we have. So at that point, on the topic of the affordable units, I mean, my, my take on that is I think, I would encourage you to present the best project you can present, you know, going forward on those fronts. And given all that we've heard over the past several years about how to manage the housing component, I guess, I'm not sure how else to address that point unless someone else on the board has further comment. I'm trying to just argue, make sure you have something to work from tonight.
I know, there's, you sound like you're split on the affordable housing one. Your fifth planning board member unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but he may be able to weigh in at your next meeting on the 27th after he reviews this public hearing.
Sure. That's helpful, I think, so. And I think on the Blue Heart Tavern front, again, I think it's a matter of you presenting the best project you think you can present that works, you know, as many fronts as you can present, as you can make it work. You've heard a lot of sort of perhaps more vocal opinions on that front tonight than we've heard for quite a few weeks. So again, I think that'd be the best sort of suggestion I could make as a chairman in terms of what we see next time. Okay. I think with that, I'd take off my glove to turn the page. So anyway, I think the plan is to continue this meeting to, our meeting on the 27th of February. And that meeting will be held at?
7:00 PM at Downey School in the Catholic area. So that's a continued hearing. It would be 2:50 Downing Street.
Okay. Can I get a motion to that effect? All right, I have a motion of second. All those in favor of continuing the hearing to the aforementioned date, date, time, place? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think we have four ayes, so. Thank you, everybody. Thank you all for your patience. So we're going to just, we're going to do one other project a little bit out of the agenda, like the final agenda. We're just going to skip to item three quickly. This is 85 Burgess Avenue as an earth material movement. EIDR public hearing proposes to import proxy unit and cubic yards of earth to regrade properties in construction of the single man residence. May I have someone here from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan Merrick, American Engineering. Here, we have the applicant. The applicant proposes to demolish an existing two-storied senior family home at 85 Burgess and construct a new home. The existing house is not performing relative to front yard setback. The new structure would increase the setback to meet the requirements. The property slopes downhill from the street towards the back. As part of the redevelopment work, it would involve the importing of about 900 yards of fill. And we have erosion controls proposed on the downslope side of the limit of work. And we also have a roof runoff infiltration system proposed for the new structure. Pretty straightforward application.
Did you have a Google map also in that format? I'm having to visualize where this actually is.
It's right across the street from the Highview Street intersection.
Okay.
So if you look at the picture, the new house shifts further, about 20 feet further away from the road, and then to, towards the top of the page, about 30 feet. Kind of centers it up a little bit more on the property.
Okay. What's the plan for traffic rather, for the truck work?
It would come up from 109 through Burgess.
That's no choice, probably. Okay. Do we have any, I know we don't have any more staff. Do we have any staff comments or suggestions for the memo? This is pretty straightforward.
We did have, received a memo from Phil, acting as the town engineer, summarizing the project, and didn't have any concerns. Just recommended that the street be protected from tracking any excess dirt and that any damage to the public right of way be revered.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Speaking of everyone. I think you had the limit of work. So how long do you expect the work? When do you expect to, I hope I wasn't, you didn't already answer this. When do you plan on starting and how long will it take?
Phil, I think it's planned to start within the next month. As soon as he gets a building permit, then it will probably take six months or so.
Yeah, building permits can be a lot.
Oh, I mean, the fill, the fill. I'm just saying the truck that...
With a truck tractor?
Yeah, exactly. Bringing in the fill.
So that would occur with the initial phase of construction? You know, you demolish existing house. You would excavate for and install the new foundation. And that's the point when you would bring the effort in. So within the first two months of the sixth-month process would be when the fill would occur.
You said this slopes down?
Downhill from the road.
So what is the, what is the plan on the back? So is that a retaining wall in the back?
There is a retaining wall. Well, there's an existing retaining wall. We're just proposing to slow it down.
Okay.
In the back.
So nothing additional there?
No.
And then the other question he has on the, on the backside, do you plan on removing trees on the backside of the property?
Yes, yes.
All the way to the, are you clear cutting to the back?
Close to the lot line, right behind the house. So if you're, if you're looking at the right side of the plan, there would not be, that area would not be cleared. But the area, in having to ship the house back to comply with the front yard setback requirements, you do have to remove trees behind the house there.
Yeah, it would just be nice to save some of those on there for... I know there's some of these, I drove by this neighborhood. They're smaller lots.
The area behind the lot is wooded. So it's not like there's a...
Oh, the other, the other, the other...
Backing up behind the property. You have the area, yeah. You see the area behind the lot is all wooded, offset.
Okay. Any other comments or anything? Okay, I, we have a draft list of conditions. Have you been a party to that list?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I'm getting there, so, okay. Do, I guess with nothing else from the board, is there anyone here for a public comment on this project? Okay, seen none?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
So you said you're going to cut almost to the property? I'm just curious, because that wooded lot is, I'm just curious how much you're going to see once you're done.
Yes, we would cut almost directly behind the house, almost the property length, but the area higher up on the plan?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So as I said, I have a few suggested conditions of approval that's drafted by our planner. I'll quickly read through them. The first one is existing payment on previous asset to protect from damage from loading and unloading of material related to the proposed construction. Two, there'll be construction entrance to prevent excess tracking of material into the public way. Three, the applicant shall clean the site daily to prevent excess filler dust from impacting the road or building properties. Four, the applicant shall notify the town department of the local works during installation of the infiltration system that is proposed to ensure compliance with the design. Five, the project-related construction and earth material movement shall comply with the town's general bylaws, Chapter 292 for noise construction between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays. And number six, all trucks carrying earth material to or from 85 Burgess should require to access Burgess Avenue from High Street only. Seven, the imported fill should not contain any hazardous or substandard material. Number eight is long, so I apologize. If a project or any condition imposed in this decision requires permanent license or other approval of a mannered board committee or agency of the town of Westwood or other regulatory agencies of the Commonwealth or the federal government, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for same. If any condition of such permanent license or other approval of a mannered board committee or agency is inconsistent with such decision, the applicant shall make an application to the board, to the planning board for amendment of this decision. And the planning board shall consider such application according to the requirements of MGL Chapter 48, Paragraph 9, and all applicable planning board rules and regs. And finally, the applicant shall promptly repair any damage which applicant caused to sidewalks, street pavement, signage, or other fixtures or features within the public right of way. After obtaining permission from the town, such repair shall be performed to town in Westwood standards. Does that all sound acceptable? Okay, all right. So could I hear, are there any further comments from the board? Yeah, I just had a comment on the durash, the working day. So it's 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. I'm just thinking, is there, is there any way that we can sort of shorten that? I don't think I'd be in favor of this if I lived nearby and there, these trucks are coming in and dumping. I don't know if anybody else had an opinion on that, but I just think that the working time can... Is that, is this different than any other approval we've ever done on these types of projects?
You can make it more restrictive if you choose to, but you know, at times when that's come up, it just, if you shorten the hours of construction, it ultimately could delay the length of construction overall over a longer period of time.
I'm saying even like Saturday, well, I don't know. Have any neighbors ever complained about this?
I've heard more complaints related to commercial projects, not necessarily about this kind of project.
But they can start working the day anyway at 7:00. Is that, is that true?
Yep, 7:00 a.m.
So nail guns and all that are going at 7:00, so, yeah. All right. Okay. Could I get a, could I hear, could I hear a motion from someone?
I'll make a motion to approve the year-end charter moving from 85 Burgess.
All right, I have a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving this earth material movement application?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so that's, we have four ayes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Yes, so I have a motion to close the public hearing for 85 Burgess Avenue. All right. I have a motion of second. All those in favor? Aye. There are four ayes. Okay. Back to number two. 256 Washington Street, EIDR public hearings. The proposal to replace windows, install new doors, modify walkway, and landscape it for new commercial uses.
Good evening, for the record, Peter Zachary here on behalf of the TruZello Properties LLC. For the record, Georgie, TruZello's here as indicated. This is the former, I call it, ski shop. We have received permission by our special permit from the Zomby Board of Appeals. We'll be relocating the Bismington barber shop to this location in what I'll call the livers space, the much smaller space. Will be a local tailor from Westwood who will be utilizing that space. So the proposal essentially, as you see here, is what is windows. There's currently a middle door with windows on either side. Those are going to be replaced with the doors as shown on the plan in front of you. And then we're going to extend the walkway so that will allow each tenant to have... and then we're gonna extend the walkway, so that'll, that will allow each tenant to have their own, each commercial tenant to have their own entrance, and we can reserve the middle door, which currently exists for the residential apartments that exist on the top. I should indicate to you that the interior work has essentially been done. What is left to be done, assuming we get this permit, is, is, as I said, just to block the windows, I'll replace them with the doors, and to extend the existing walkway as shown, so that it will go to the, to the, both doors will have it. And this is basically a grade, I believe, so. That's it, okay.
Any board comments, questions?
The landscaping, you gotta add any shrubbery or anything like that? I think just the up and the do it down.
Basically, it's already all, all trees there now, but we're just taking out of that. It's all done, but. Yeah, so all big trees are staying. So we're just coming out on the white, excuse me, the glass, coming across from left, so let's just have grass. And then on the left side, you're, you're actually just doing a small motion.
Is that someone gonna stay?
This side, we need to.
Any other questions from anyone? I see there are three waivers that we're looking to include or approve as part of our approval. One would be a waiver of exterior lighting plan, a traffic study, and a presentation model. I don't see any reason not to grant these waivers. Are there any reasons that we would not grant it?
Well, that's up to you, the board. I mean, one question, I guess, might be the question about the exterior lighting. If there's security lighting, is it gonna be on, you know, all night? Or can it all be turned off after you close the business?
It will be pulled, it'll be, sorry, the, the lighting on the two sides will shut off by automatic time.
Okay, great. All right, and there's a few conditions. I don't know if you've been a part of them, but I'll, I'll read them as, as they've been recommended by staff. First condition is the applicant needs a wastewater license by the Westwood Board of Health to dispose of construction debris. The applicant should provide a portable toilet license by the Westwood Board of Health if necessary during renovation and construction. The applicant goes shopping back to an asbestos survey to comply with DEV asbestos regs for interior renovations or demo. And just to get proof of the survey to the building health departments with the relevant building permit application. The parking space should be identified with parking lot striping and maintained as necessary. All exterior light should be turned off for the now or close of business. And a copy of this decision on project plan should be kept on the project site at all times during construction. All those things sound acceptable? Yes, all right. Are there, are there, are there no further questions or comments, if I could, perhaps? Well, first, remember, do we probably have a vote on the three waivers? To accept the three waivers as stated? Could I get a motion to accept the three waivers as stated?
I make a motion to, to accept the three waivers as stated.
Okay. All right, we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Could I solicit a motion to approve 256 Washington Street, EIDR, application? Okay. All right, I have a motion of second, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I have four ayes. Could I get a motion to close this hearing? All right, I have a motion of second, any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's four.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Two. Lost all of our friends.
For going near Pack and I included the full public hearing notice. For the near public hearing will be at your next meeting on the 27th. Time timed for 7:00 p.m. start time. We can hold discussion till that meeting, it's to the late hour. The update I have is that the O'Ben Baker House item, that map change related to that has been officially withdrawn. So that will come off, and you don't need to discuss that at your public hearing. So for your next meeting, I'll provide you with the draft presentation, and we can discuss the full article so that you can make your recommendation at that hearing to forward on to, you know.
Do we have anything else on that agenda yet of the?
You have the continued Islington, yeah, the continued University Station, the condos.
Okay.
So that will be another full meeting.
Okay.
Can we do it somewhere warm?
Just please. Okay, briefly, are there any committee reports that are worth mentioning tonight? We will meet in two weeks, so. Okay. Meeting schedule, moving to be from 9:00 to 9:00 5:00.
Is that okay for everyone?
What is that?
It's on, the day after Labor Day, it's gonna be an election. We can't hold a hearing on an election. If we could just move it to the following day, Wednesday, you think?
Yeah, that's fine.
Should be fine, I mean. Approval of minutes?
Yeah, Rockman from the January 16 meeting.
I didn't, I looked, I didn't have any comments, did Dale want us to provide comments?
Yeah, no, no comments from him.
Okay, comments from Steve?
No, I did not.
Wow. Do we feel comfortable proving in his absence? Are we, are we, are we able to do that, right? With only four of us, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of 116 and 130, 2018?
So what?
I have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so I think we have four ayes. Okay, it's a series of upcoming meetings here, I don't think we need to read through them. Although maybe, what is it, OSRP, Open Space?
Open Space. I'm looking to, we march 8th, it'll be the next committee meeting.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn, you're second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Let's go, everybody.